Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303 online at pennfieldtv.org and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You just need to simply search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know that is free. If anyone wishes to address the board tonight regarding any public hearing matter, there will be an opportunity to do so. We have three methods. One is people can call in. That's why you'll see me looking at this computer every once in a while to check if anybody's called. They can submit comments via the town's website, pennfield.org. By the way, the phone number to call in is 340-8771. Or they can come here live, and we'll invite anyone that cares to speak about the application to come up and do so. And of course, all along, we accept comments via email as well. So what we'll do when we invite folks up, we'll ask them to come up here and give us the name and address applicants, as well as anybody that wants to comment on that. But we certainly do appreciate everyone's involvement and participation in these proceedings. We like to point out every month that we think the town does a really good job of making sure that people in the community are aware of what's on our agenda, so that they can come in and comment, or comment the other methods that I mentioned. And the town does that in many ways. One way is they make applicants post signs on the property. So when you're driving by, you see the sign, you say, hmm, what's going on there? You can call the town and get more information. If you live nearby a site, you'll get a postcard in the mail that alerts you that there is an application. And again, you can call and find out more about the application and then, and comment. The town also posts the agenda on its website, and I think they actually still do it on the bulletin board here at Town Hall. We think it's good, as I said. We think it helps us do our job, and we appreciate that. We will start tonight's meeting by going over any tabled items that we have, review the minutes from the last session. That shouldn't take very long, and then we will proceed right into the public hearings for the new applications that are on tonight. And I think that's it. I think I've pretty much covered it. So having said all that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So the first order of business, then, yes, is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. May I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I will second that. So we have a motion to approve by Andres. I have seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have two tabled matters tonight. The first one, for 3408 Atlantic Avenue, is going to continue to be tabled at the request of the applicant.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to table that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second tabled application is for Sovereign Drive. Is anybody here on that one? Come on up. I don't think we did seeker on this last time.
Probably not.
No, I don't think so.
One of them, you started to do it.
Yes, and I think you jumped down my throat on that one.
Me? I would never do such a thing.
Yeah. Okay. So you guys were here last month. We tabled it to see what was happening with Planning Board, if anything. You gave us a very thorough presentation, thorough written application. So I guess I'll just ask you quickly, what's, what did happen with Planning Board? I think we're ready to move on this application tonight, but just for the record, what happened there?
Sure. Brian White from McMahon &amp; Roo. We did receive a referral from the Planning Board for sketch plan. I have included that to Andy in PDF version. I have hard copies, if you'd like one of those as well. In summary, most of the comments were related to some of the design components of the property. One item on their referral letter makes reference to dumpster enclosure or a tote enclosure for refuse. We did include that on our revised site plan, also included, and I have hard copies of that as well. We still are underneath our 65% coverage limit. We're at 64.7. We have revised our parking configuration. By code, requires 44 spaces. We're proposing 33 of those four of them will be handicap. And building footprint, location, all remain the same, that revised application. We did also provide a chart from the future tenant Wellness 360 outlining their peak traffic volumes during the day, both, you know, anticipated and then projected. They're projecting a maximum between clients and employees of 20 cars per hour. Again, we're proposing 33 spaces with this development.
I'm sorry, that's 20, I couldn't hear you, 28 clients?
So in total, between clients per hour and employees per hour, there'd be a peak traffic flow of 20 cars per hour.
20.
Correct.
All right, so nothing that happened at Planning Board changed your variance request, if I'm understanding you, which is fine. We just want to clarify.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I'm certainly ready to proceed with this application tonight. So I'll start with the seeker, and I will make a motion to declare this a type-two action requiring no further seeker action.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as far as the merits, I will make a motion to approve all of the requests. I'll start by saying that we did, back in 2019, grant a similar request for another use that, for whatever reason, did not develop on the site. That, I believe, was actually a larger building. This is about 8,800 square feet, give or take.
Correct.
I think that was over 9,000. Their variances weren't as high a percentage as yours, but they were close enough, honestly, that I think it's a fair comparison. They did not have a parking variance, but I think that was a warehouse project, so, you know, they probably weren't going to have the flow as much as you guys were. But in any event, as I said earlier, I think that you demonstrated this is going to be a good project. It's a large building on kind of an odd-shaped lot, so you have to deal with that. But in my opinion, you've made a case for the variances. And a big part of this is you're, you're not surrounded by residential homes. You're surrounded by commercial, it's a general business area. So just going quickly through the standards here, the area is zone general business, and the surrounding properties are commercial, as I've said. The physical therapy's not going to require more than the requested number of spots. You've demonstrated that. And the size of the building, the large size of the building, which then leads to the request for the variances. But that size is necessary to meet the operational needs of the user. Can the benefit be sought by some other means feasible? Well, the configuration of the lot restricts the potential uses, and that leads, again, to the request for the variances. Are they substantial? Well, there's certainly a large number of variance requests, so in that sense, it's substantial. But each individual variance request, I think one is over 50%. The others are less than 50%. So no, I would, I would, well, I guess I would, I checked yes, so I should say yes on that. There's no proof in the record of any adverse effects. Is the difficulty self-created? Absolutely, but as we know, this is a balancing test. No one factor takes precedence over the others. So viewing this all as a whole, knowing that not that many years ago, we approved a similar variance request, those are all the reasons that I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all requests and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Have a good night. All right, so that takes care of the tabled matters. Let's proceed, then, if we would, for the, with tonight's public hearings. I should have said, Andy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, that the process that we use here is, everyone may very well be aware that applicants are required to submit an application in writing. And they're, as I, you just heard me say, very thorough application with a lot of details. So rather than have an applicant come up and sort of regurgitate everything that's in paper, we've all had a chance to review that. So we'll have a board member sort of lead, generally speaking, lead folks through the application and sort of hit the highlights. I don't say that to limit anybody's time in speaking. Feel free to say what you feel you have to say. I will tell you, we are, we're down a couple of board members tonight, so bear with us because we're kind of covering for the lack of two members tonight, who just weren't able to make it. But that's why you'll see us being a little bit, leading the applicant through the process. So thanks for that. Go ahead, Andy, with the first one.
Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, PL Box 597, Ontario, New York, 14519. On behalf of Five Guys Restaurants, request approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a second building sign, whereas a maximum of one building sign is permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, and building signage with greater overall area than permitted under Section 250-10.13-B of the code at 2067 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Conifer Pennfield Associates and is zone general business. SBL number 140.05-1-1.2/2067. This is application number 24Z-0021.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great. All right, if we could have names and addresses. Good to see you again. It's been a while.
Hi, how you doing?
My name is Mary Lee Richards. I am the Director of Operations for Five Guys for Western New York.
My name is Fred Winaldi. I'm the managing partner of Conifer Pennfield Associates, landlord, and a, one of the partnership of landlord and tenant here for tonight's presentation.
Okay, so thank you for that. You're requesting to have, in essence, an additional building sign.
That's correct.
The code allows one, you want two. So tell us a little bit about the building that you're moving into and why, why you think you need two signs.
So I'm going to talk about the building from the standpoint of, of a change that anybody who's been on the campus has noticed, that we've renovated the former medical office building to accommodate a mix of uses, predominantly retail. In doing so, and having had managed this property for the last 20, 23 years, we've noticed a change in the way that a service center like Parkside Commons is, interfaces and has a relationship with its customers. And, and with this plaza in particular, which has a density of service-type retailers, the relationship and the rhythm with how the consumers and patrons interface with the spaces is, is a little different and constant and revolving. The other thing that we celebrate in a very, a very great way is the density of, of family traffic and young drivers. In fact, we have one of the oldest Triple A's still on our campus that was there. My father did that deal well, well before me. And we love that. And that's, it's really been our focus and the concentration of, of business types that now live in our, at Parkside. The, the term that a lot of sign companies use with corner building in the hopes to elicit a second sign is one that has merits. For me, and I believe for Marley as well, this has, this signage request has more of a directory utility to us. And I have a photo that I emailed to Andy also, that I took about an hour ago that I'll pass around.
Thank you.
The predominant traffic pattern comes by way of eastbound 441 movement, which puts the, the, one of, one of the heavier access points being that the 441 entry, which, which is at the Triple A opposite the Wegmans Plaza. When you access by way of the 441 entrance and you're traveling due north, that's the image that I, that I had just presented is, is what you see on the building. What concerns us is that you don't, you don't have an identifier, a building identifier that, that pulls you across the longer portion of the campus by way of the, that building's south elevation, which is the subject this evening. And, and the other, the other element that, believe it or not, is part of the building's design, sometimes the simple application of trade dress or branding finishes that elevation's aesthetic. And the other thing that's really important is that we're not done yet. We have, we'll have two or three additional tenants coming to the building. What we really wanted to happen, and this will be subsequent to today's conversation, and I'm, and I'm sure celebrated by the, by the community, but we really want to change the way we interface with Harris Wayland Park, and we want to open up that access point in between the main plaza building and the newly renovated building. And so one of the ways we're going to do that is create proper tenant entries down that south elevation. And so this isn't going to live kind of by itself, but it is part of developing that elevation storefront. The, the responsibility on me to make sure that people have easy access to the tenant spaces is helped, aided, and guided greatly by trade dress. And when you have a brand that has very recognizable branding, with Five Guys National branding, it helps a lot provide guidance across the plaza, especially when you have unique attributes like we have, where you, we've got several access points on 250 serviced also by the RIA, the reciprocal easement that, that allows you to travel a little further north down 250 to find passage or egress out of, of the plaza. And when you have a healthy collection of tenants and clear trade dress, it actually makes the interface with the, with the plaza easier. And for many, many years, our prime topics in front of the Planning Board and Town Board and the Zoning Board has been signage and traffic and parking. And one of the cool things that we have as part of Parkside is a natural traffic mitigating configuration by way of the pad sites and the islands and the parking facilities. And so it works really well. We can, we can control traffic. And so now our focus is to provide very easy access to the storefronts themselves. And by way of doing that, you help spread and broadcast the parking and traffic across the entirety of the property, making its utilization balanced and better, and easier to use. You, you don't want to disparage a customer from patroning any of the businesses there.
So may I interrupt you and ask you, what other buildings, businesses in the plaza or in the plaza across the street have more than one building sign?
So we, we had this very conversation for the former Zoom Tan, which now upgraded to Zoom Fit, to the other. So we'll have a, I'll be in front of the town with great news to backfill that space within a matter of weeks. We, we had similar conversations for the remodels of the Triple A way back when. We've had conversations for, that were similar for Starbucks, most, most recently, when we, when we completed that two years ago, or a year ago. And, and the concept was, was, was just that we recognize that 250, 441 has become a, a primary trade area. It is now pulling traffic that is grading similar to some of the stronger primary trade areas, like Brighton 12 Corners, for example, except we have, we have a little more surface area to enjoy. And, and we should be, we should be excited about that because by way of the density of operations, we can build staying power within our, within our businesses. And that's really important because we work hard to bring the tenants here.
Yeah.
And Marley is the Director of All Stores in Western New York, has an awesome kind of case study analysis to say, well, I've seen this work and I, and I've seen this fail. Here, you know, we, if this was, if we thought that this was applying an excessive use of visibility, an excessive use of signage, I would probably be a little remiss to, to sit next to Marley and, and beg for this this evening. But we do believe that this comes with great utility beyond marketing, beyond branding. This provides a directory service and function within the plaza. And, and I, and I took photos from 10 feet off to, all the way to the, to the Zoom Tan building. The one I presented was right in the center, and it is, it is quite a distance from, from the, the south end of the main plaza building to, to the Five Guys entrance. And, and, you know, so we, we thought that it was a fair request and, and would look to answer any questions as it relates to specific impact on both Marley and myself.
So you mentioned an access road to Harris Wayland. I know the one that you pass the Triple A, kind of that area, it doesn't connect yet to Harris, right? It goes to the eye doctor, and it kind of cuts off. Are you planning on doing another access road from where?
He's talking foot traffic. So, so pedestrian.
Okay.
I want to, I want to reprogram my dumpster enclosure. I want that to be beautiful back there. We have all-new parking lots coming. We have, we have an incredible landscaping plan for the balance of summer that Teresa are.
So to connect it through foot traffic?
Yeah.
From the park, yeah.
Yeah, so basically the back of the building. The way I understand, basically where, you know, like when there's fireworks going on, people always cut through the back when they try to park across the street. That's, that pathway.
So we, so we'd like to donate a, a, essentially a bridge that would scale the creek, and we'd like to, to do things to make it safer for people who go back and forth. We, we already are applying an organic tick, tick treatment because we've had a very, very heavy season, early season, and it's, it's just going to get worse. But we want there to be free and fun enjoyment back and forth. The other thing that we, that we deal with in Harris Wayland is a park that's enjoyed year-round. You know, come fall, come October, we're going to have 75 consecutive days where the sun sets before 4:30. And so I'd like to make the buildings not look, the back of them not look like the back of a building, and start to improve the aesthetic by simple lighting, landscaping, and just making them look more friendly. And, and I think that this is an awesome catalyst for that, given that we're going to be fully leased up at the, at the property, and now we can have fun evolving our amenities. Laura, we have no approval for this. I will, but as Daniel can tell you, I'm very stubborn, and, and I will be, I'll be around to, to plead, to plead for a really awesome public-private partnership between the two properties.
You, you guys have a directory, our big monument type, or directory signed on 250?
And 441.
And 441. Will Five Guys be listed on that as well?
They already are.
They already are, okay. Okay.
So that, so the, so with the recent improvements to 250 and 441, making them easier to use, what also comes with that are higher driving speeds, unfortunately.
Right.
And the, the left turn-in, the northern movement into the plaza, is not by signal or light. And so by creating that awareness right there, it provides the driver greater time to, to prepare to move into the plaza. So we find those to be very effective. They're tiny signs. We have 20, 30 names on there, and it's kind of a marker that, that elicits a response. And then once you're in, it's our, it's our job to get you to the front door safe.
Do you, do you anticipate coming back when you're improving the, let's say, in the future, you end up improving the backside? Are you going to end up coming back and saying, hey, we'd like to put little small signs in the back of all the buildings, where then we'll be coming back for more variances for all the businesses possibly?
So the, the next phase of directory is going to be more biophilic and natural. You'll see, instead of using fences for Five Guys, we brought in beautiful, large stones. And, and so you're going to see a, a relationship, it's going to be more, think about a pressurized environment. We're going to do it naturally by way of, of landscaping and physical, kind of, kind of a physical deployment between the resources. There won't be any active business needs, so anything that would be, there would be funds, a map, a map, wayfinding station. But nothing, no signage that would serve as the benefit of, of the business specific.
Okay, thank you.
This is an interesting, because it's, it's a corner, and I understand what you're trying to do. My, my concern is the size, because that's the other, how big? I, I'm trying to, because it's, the, the way that the property sticks out, I know exactly what you're talking about. It kind of jets out a little bit. It's a separate building from Salvatore's that you have at the end there, and it is a long, so it's an interesting, I'm just, is it going to be so in-your-face, guys? Like, that's what I'm trying to, and I'm not, you know I'm not good with measurements. Measurements is my strong suit. How big is?
So, so this sign is 137 inches wide by 82, just over 82 inches tall, which fills the, which fills the drive-in area.
So it fills that entire?
Now, this rendering is not, obviously not, not my rendering. What I would, what I would be comfortable proposing would be to maintain a, a, more of a negative space border around it, so that it floats in, in the center. Right now, I would, it has, it has a, it does have a, a border on the top and bottom of the sign as proposed, but I think, given that the sign is rectangle, as is the space it'll be filling, that we can keep, that we can propose.
I'd say, I think this one's square.
It looks like it. Well, it's pretty close.
It just, it, it would be so big compared to the other signs. That's my only.
So, so the way that I'm looking at this is that this sign, the second sign facing south, is really meant to be seen by folks coming in, as you were talking about, by, let's say Monte Albano.
Sure.
And driving, you know, it's not all a long way, but they're driving through a lot of businesses to get to that, and they'll see that sign. Yes, it is, it is big. Then the one on the, the east facade is going to capture all the people driving north and south on 250. So I hear you that if it, if it were an extra-large sign on the east facade, I would share the concern. But this one, I think, knowing that its target is the people coming in off of 441 and driving that distance, I'm, I'm okay with the signs. But I mean, I get it. To me, that's, that sign, the second sign, is an important issue for safety within the parking lot.
I'm just looking at this rendering and that. If it's full red, feels aggressive.
Okay.
Like, the negative border, I liked what you were talking about, just to fit the, I'm just, the aesthetic of it would look better if there was a little bit of negative.
So I think the photo they submitted, this, this drawing that we're seeing on the screen is different than the one they're looking at on their paper.
Okay.
Because I think yours on the paper is different than what we see on our screen here that was submitted.
Do you know what I mean? Like, if the whole thing is red?
And I think he's updating that it's not going to be filling the entire white space.
Okay.
By the way, everybody here should realize that every vote we take tonight to be effective has to be unanimous. So everybody's got to be happy that sits up.
I just, I'm not, it's not a big, I'm just saying that, like, if the whole thing was red like that, I would be a little bit.
And Laura, the, I will tell you, as the person responsible for paying for these improvements, and I have great pride in our buildings, that the sign that's on the screen right now would not pass landlord approval.
Okay.
And what, what I would approve, though, is a sign that has a negative space border around it.
So a white border around it of equal space or something, maybe, to say?
Correct. So if, so if, if the, if the board would consider, if, if the concept is okay, maybe we could approve subject to final sign-off by, by the board or Andy, so we can at least provide an opportunity for, for Kirk to get, get moving and fabricating, which I know is a, a long lead time these days.
I guess one thing, I mean, the way that, the way I look at it is, we know how wide that space is.
Yeah.
If we just say no larger than X square foot, you know, we, we can subtract out whatever that amount is, that it would be less than what's, that, what we got on our paperwork versus what you have right now.
Yeah, I was just trying to reconcile what was submitted versus what this is.
And I think what's submitted is what we see, not what's on the new drawing.
Okay.
All right, we good?
Yes, I'm good, I'm good.
Other questions here? That's okay. I don't see anybody, unless that's a call with a comment, I don't know. I don't see anybody calling in or submitting electronic comments, so I'll ask anyone in the audience, care to speak about this application? No. Oh, that was a thumbs up for her?
Yeah.
Oh, way to go, okay.
Burgers and fries.
Yeah, yeah, well. All right.
Pennfield.
So let's first proceed with the seeker. I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and then further to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
So let's first proceed with the seeker. I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and then further to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I will make a motion to approve the requests for the second sign, as well as the size overage. I note that the factors, as we've talked about, many businesses, companies in the area have two signs. I personally think it's an important issue for safety, traffic flow, and pedestrian flow within the plaza. This part, this south-facing sign, the one on the east, I think is more to get people in off the road, and that's fine. I don't see any issues with visual hazards or sight limitations because of the sign. I don't see that it interferes in any way with any of the enjoyment of the plaza. Now, actually, that Laura's made it a nicer-looking sign, that's even better. We all know it's 250 is high speed of vehicles, and so I do, again, think safety is paramount. Those are the reasons for my motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve for the reasons stated. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
So the dimensions that are on this rendering that we're looking at here, is that going to stay the same?
I would submit that as the updated...
We're going with that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you.
I think that'll give plenty of room to whoever.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck. I'm excited. I can't wait to see all of the...
We're open. I'm in business.
I didn't know that, yet they were open. Did I know that?
Yeah, well, you didn't know it.
Now I know. Yes, we'll be there.
So I just wanted to expand a little bit about the comment I made about the vote. Typically, we have five board members, so a majority usually suffices for a vote to pass. What the law is, is that for any vote to pass, it has to be a majority of the entire board as appointed, present or not. So when we have three out of five here, we still have to get three votes for any vote to pass, so...
So if you're feeling worried, ask for a table. No, I'm joking.
Yeah, okay, so next one, please.
Kimberly Titus, 29 Woodfield Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a pool house with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 29 Woodfield Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Kimberly and Donald Titus and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 108.08-1-121. This is application number 24Z-0022.
Hi. How are you? Good. Do you want to say it with your name and address?
My name is Kimberly Titus, and I live at 29 Woodfield Drive.
Great. Well, we got your application, thank you. I had just a few questions to clarify. So really, what you're looking for is to put a pool house. Have you, has the pool been constructed yet?
It's under construction.
Okay. So pool house is going as part of the construction, and you want to put it closer to the property line than what you're allowed for?
Correct.
First question with regards to the pool house, what are you looking to store? What is the purpose for the building?
Honestly, everything that goes along with the pool, just to keep it contained and keep it looking neat in our yard, you know, just a place to put everything.
Okay. I don't know if it makes any, I hear the word "house," and it makes me a little anxious, but, okay. Well, this was my second question, as if you've talked to the neighbors.
Yes, so I did, she is not there often, so it was hard to track her down, but I was able to meet her in the yard, and I showed her where it would be and what our plans were. She gave me verbal acceptance. I emailed her to follow up, and I didn't hear back in the email, but verbally, she said she was completely fine.
Well, she has emailed. I'm assuming, is it Claire Smith?
No.
Claire's at 33, I think?
Two houses over.
33 Woodfield.
Different neighbor.
Different neighbor.
A few neighbors down.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, Claire is okay.
Okay.
But you did speak to the adjacent neighbor who this would be kind of as close to their property and didn't have any verbal dissent from what you wanted to do?
Nope.
My other question is just the location itself. You are asking for a greater than 50% variance. Is there any place else that you could put the building that would be a little bit closer or a little bit more within code?
So part of the reason we want to put it closer to the property line is, you can see, we've planted evergreens and arborvitae's, and we'd also like to do a privacy fence, so we actually feel it would be more obscure and hidden if it's a little bit closer. We do have different elevations in our yard, and where we're looking to put the pool house is a flatter place. Also, we have three small children who play on the swing set behind it. I don't know if it's in any of those pictures, but we like a clear view of them from our house. That's the other reason.
And so putting the pool anywhere else, not only is the landscape difficult, but then also the viewpoints would be hard to be able to see. Did you guys have any questions?
No. Pretty thorough.
Good. Dan?
All right. I don't see anybody on the phone or submitting any electronic comments, so I'd ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this. Okay, let's move to consideration then.
Well, I was going to start with seeker. I would make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, not requiring any additional action.
I'll second.
All right, a seeker motion declared a type-two. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the merits?
I would make a motion to approve based on, you know, this is within concert. It's a beautiful design that you've created in the backyard. The pool house itself is going to be used for exactly that, to help maintain the pool area. You've spoken to specifically the south-side neighbor, while we don't have anything in writing, taking that they've had plenty of opportunity to come forth at this point and have at least verbally acknowledged that they would be okay with this, that the structure, while it could be positioned someplace else, it really is not in an ideal, given the landscape itself, making it difficult to construct elsewhere. And then, of course, the visibility and the safety for not only the swing set, but then you'd also made a comment in your application about those actually using the pool, and that having it someplace else could actually obstruct the view while people are using the pool. You know, I did mention that this is what I would consider a substantial variance. It is something that's slightly over 50% of a request, but that it really wouldn't have any adverse impact on the physical environment. And then oftentimes with these types of requests, it is self-created. But with that, I would make a motion to approve the request of six feet from the minimum 10-foot setback.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve for the reasons stated. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have to read all of this, right? You've decided?
You did fine.
You're doing good.
No, no, like, this is all of the dimensions, okay.
All right, moving right along.
Jeffrey and Robin Jennings, Jennings Elton and Maddel Funeral Home Incorporated, 1704 Penfield Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a freestanding sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1704 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by JARM Properties LLC and is zoned business non-retail, SBL number 139.05-1-47. This is application number 24Z-0023.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Satinsky, and I am here on behalf of Livingston Associates, the construction management for the Jennings Funeral Home renovations.
Excellent, thank you. Thorough application, appreciate that. I guess what we're looking for is, you guys are, I guess they're doing a substantial remodel there of the area and new parking area, or new parking configuration, a loop in front, it looks like. And the old sign is going to be relocated to, I guess, a little higher up the hill than where it was before, just because of the way the driveline's going to be now. And you need a variance because the right-of-way is a straight line, but the road is curving farther away, and so to have the same perceived distance that you had previously, which was within code, now you're farther away, but you're sitting it closer to the right-of-way, which means now you need a variance because the roadway, or I guess you're moving a little bit higher up the road, and you need a variance for this sign. Is that pretty accurate?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
We are four feet, two inches from the right-of-way.
Where previously it was a little bit farther down the hill, and you were okay. Okay. In terms of out of character, we didn't see anything out of character to the neighborhood because it's the same sign you're reusing, just relocating it from that aspect. For line of sight and things like that, at least based what I was seeing, with the road coming down a slight hill, it shouldn't really obscure anyone coming down the road for, you know, traffic-wise, because you can actually look up the hill, and the sign won't be blocking that now that it's closer to the right-of-way. One question on the driveline, is there going to be an in and an out at that property, or is it going to be both ways on that roadway?
Both will be both ways.
Okay.
It'll be far enough back, though, that it won't be blocking the view from...
View, okay.
Exit.
Because it'll still be back behind the sidewalk that goes up by there.
Yes.
Excellent. Didn't see, let's see. I don't think anything else sticks out here in terms of issues. Same sign, so it's going to be compatible. No negative impacts, because it's going to appear the same way, and that's what it looked like previous, or I guess that...
That is the same sign.
Yep, there it is, yep.
That's the situation where we want it, just on the other side.
Opposite side of the driveway, yep. That's, there's not much here for this one, Dan. So we're pretty thorough.
Right. Laura?
I'm good.
Okay, no phone calls, no electronic. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
I'm sure someone must be dying to talk about this one.
Ah, you...
Somebody had a joke, right? Yeah.
Joke?
Anywho, all right, so let's proceed with seeker.
Okay, let's see. This is a unlisted action pursuant to seeker. Sorry, it's a negative declaration on an unlisted action pursuant to seeker.
I'll second that. So we have a motion to declare it an unlisted action and to issue a negative declaration. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then onto the merits. I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance. As we discussed before, it's in character with the neighborhood. The signage isn't changing, it's just being relocated to the opposite side of the driveway, which causes the variance. But aesthetically, it's not going to look like it's any closer to the roadway than it was before, so there shouldn't be any negative impacts for that variance. The sign won't interfere with the traffic, it won't interfere with the view for the roadway pulling onto the road. And the sign is needed to adequately identify the business, because there's no other signage on the building for that. And I think that's all I've got.
All right, so you made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a lovely evening.
You too. And guess who's back?
We've missed you.
Greg Grillo, Arcade 80s, 1676 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1E of the code to allow a game arcade business at 1694 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by D&amp;L Realty Incorporated and is owned limited business, SBL number 139.05-1-53. This is application number 24Z-0024.
Okay, go get your name and number, or name and address.
Hello, I'm Greg Grillo, owner of 80s, Arcade 80s. My address is 1676 Penfield Road.
Excellent, thank you. So we are back, not too far from your current location where you are, but you're looking to relocate to the Speedy's Plaza?
Directly next door.
Next door. So I got to start off by asking, do you think there's enough parking there?
I'm going to say maybe.
Maybe.
Solid maybe.
Maybe, okay.
Yes, definitely.
And so for that, basically, you're looking to relocate. I don't know which suite it was, I don't know if it said which suite you're moving into, but I think where the bakery was, is that what it was?
Number three.
Yep, okay. So you're moving in there. In terms of harmony for the neighborhood, I guess you were right next door before. Should there be any changes to the neighborhood with you moving into a different location right next door?
I don't think so.
Nothing anticipated? Okay. In terms of access to the site, looks like there's a large driveway and access to the roadway. I think there's two ways in and out of that plaza, so it looks like there's adequate means for egress into the plaza for that, through the parking lot.
There's also a ramp in the center of the plaza for individuals that require wheelchair assistance.
Perfect, excellent, thank you. In terms of compatibility with the area, it's a general business area, and so there shouldn't be an issue with having a business go into that space, such as yours. Your hours of operation are pretty much going to stay, I guess, daytime and weekends? Is that what it kind of was? Or towards the evening, afternoons?
I'm going to be closing earlier Tuesday through Thursday. Instead of 11, I'm changing it to 10 p.m.
Okay, okay. So for the business that's there, and I guess previously this board had approved your business being right next door. I think part of it happened with the expansion and the parking before was more of the concern with the planning board.
Right.
So this should mitigate those issues. But previously, were there any issues with the business itself being in the location it was in that you're aware of?
Other than size, no.
Okay, perfect. And this space now shouldn't have an issue for occupancy and those kinds of things for those issues. It's an existing plaza. I think now you're not going to have any food or beverage at the locations, so there shouldn't be any smells or noxious odors coming from there?
Nothing cooked. It would be sealed Coke products, vending machines now.
Yeah, okay. So no exhaust fans entering out into the area in terms of that would be coming from your place?
Right.
Okay. Didn't identify anything that would be a detriment to the neighborhood for the health and safety? Everything looks good? That's all I've got.
A couple of questions. That parking lot can get pretty full. But from what I've seen, it's mostly during the day when the restaurant is, which I don't, I don't think, and I'm talking about the diner, I don't think that's open for dinner.
They close at 2 p.m.
There you go. So that's one issue, is you're, what time are you planning on opening?
5 p.m.
Great, okay. Additionally, and I think maybe this is why Andy's moving the cursor around, there is parking on the other side. That's where you were going to lease when you're in the building next door, you were going to lease that parking along that edge?
Correct.
Meaning, the landlord thought that that was available enough that he could lease it to you, so there's plenty of parking there, too. Okay. And I don't know that any other businesses are open at night there. it to you, so there's plenty of parking there, too. Okay. And I don't, I don't know that any other businesses are open at night there. There's a Chinese restaurant, so that is.
Mostly take...
Michael's at the other end, yeah.
But at that end, no.
Yeah. And Laundromat maybe at the far end as well?
Laundromat's 24 hours, I believe.
Yeah. Smoke shop, I've heard there's one there. I don't know that. But okay. Thank you whoever was laughing at that. All right, so to me, parking is a non-issue, and I know that was an issue where you were before. I just want to say that, you know, we've kidded him a little bit, because he had probably six or seven meetings he came to at least. And he always was, in my opinion, prepared. He was working really hard at the arcade in the current location. And, you know, we're not always used to seeing that from someone your age. So you're to be commended for all the work you've put on this, and I wish you the best of luck. So I guess I've sort of indicated how I'm going to vote on this.
I'm sure...
I don't see any, I don't see any call-ins. I don't see any emails. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, so, sorry, let me grab my notes here.
Type 2.
Type 2, yeah.
Okay. So I'll go on Seeker, I'll move this to type 2 action requiring no further action, I guess.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then on to the application. We covered most of the aspects for the areas, but I'm going to move to approve this application. And in terms of everything we talked about before, being in character with, you know, the neighborhood, he had a business directly next door to this plaza. You know, the only issues were when we, you know, looked to expand in parking from, from the planning board aspect for what they were looking for. That was usually the biggest pitfall, I think, that you had before. And so now with this plaza, you're going to have more than enough parking here. It's a, it's a well-used plaza, there's a lot of people in there, so there shouldn't be an issue for that in terms of those aspects. And we covered in terms of harmony with the neighborhood, those things, that's all set because, in a sense, you know, I look at this as, you've been, almost like you're a tenant in that building, you're right next door, there's not going to be any more impacts to this area because of your business that was already there. So for that, I'll move forward with this one, approve.
I was just going to second, but it sounds like you wanted to say more.
No, no, no. So I'm going to take that as a second, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So number five and number six on the agenda both have been withdrawn by the applicants. Is that right, Andy?
That is correct.
So we moved to number seven.
Christopher Di Pasquale, DCI Property Group LLC, 120 Marina Drive, Suite 203, Rochester, New York, 14626. Requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow less covered parking than required under section 250-7.7-D1 of the code at 1530 and 1550 Empire Boulevard. The properties are currently or formerly owned by 1520-1550 Empire LLC and are zoned multiple residence. SBL number 093.19-2-33 and 093.19-2-34. This is application number 24Z-0027.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening. We could have your names and addresses, and then we'll walk you through this.
Chris, Christopher Di Pasquale, 3707 Lake Road, Williamson, New York, 14589.
Senator Picharian, 11 Clanson Road, Pittsford.
Okay. All right, so my understanding is that you are planning on redeveloping the former nursing home at Hillhaven. Which, by the way, how long has it been closed now? Do you guys know by any chance? Is it five years?
No.
Four?
No, like a year?
Yeah, three year, two, three year.
Yeah, I think Rochester Regional pulled out two, three years ago.
Yeah, okay, so I wasn't that far. But okay, whatever.
My mom used to work there, so...
You didn't know Five Guys was open.
But in any event, so that's, you're proposing to build apartments there? Convert the nursing home use to around 100 apartment units?
Market rate.
Market rate apartments, okay. And your request here tonight is limited to asking for a variance from the code section that requires an apartment complexes that a minimum of 25% of the parking spaces be covered?
25 percentage of the dwelling apartments.
Dwelling apartments, yeah.
So to translate it to numbers, if you were to comply, there'd have to be 50 spots covered?
So we have total 100 dwelling units we are planning, planning for.
Right.
So 25 percentage would be approximately 25 parking spaces.
Would have to be covered.
Well, it's, it's 25...
I want to make sure that we get this right, that's why I'm asking.
So it's 25 units have to be provided with covered parking, and because there's two spaces required for each unit, that equates to 50 covered parking spaces that are required.
Okay. So I'm, I'll just, the statute, the code says, a minimum of 25% of the number of units shall have covered parking.
Correct.
That's why we came up with 25 originally, but if you're saying there's two, if we have one person per unit, we would think it would be 25, but we understand that possibly two would be, it's kind of, it's kind of a skewed number, right?
You're required to have two parking spaces for every unit. Doesn't matter how many people are living in the unit?
Okay.
Yeah, that's actually, I should have said that as well, because that's the sentence above.
So 50, we're talking about 50 covered units.
Right. I just, again, want to make sure that you're aware of that, and your request is to have zero?
Correct.
Okay. So we have, we have that clarified. So explain to us, if you would, why you need the variance? Why can't you have 50 covered parking spots, or 40, or 30, or 20, or whatever?
So, you know, currently, a lot of the local community uses it as kind of a park setting. They walk through it, they kind of walk their dogs and all the, all the necessary things. We felt that, you know, putting an additional 50 covered area, covered parking spots would bring, it just didn't look right to the, to the building, and it would, you know, add more exterior construction that would not be eye appealing. That was our thought. Currently, there's 230 parking spots, 232 parking spots?
32.
And where to put it is really, you know, where are you going to put the, the 50 covered spaces? We were strategizing that, so that's why we came to the conclusion about asking for a variance to not utilize 50 covered spots.
Do you have any, like ballpark figure at this point as to what it would cost to comply? And I don't know if you can break it down per covered spot, or, and if you don't...
We can certainly pull out that.
Yeah.
We don't have it readily available to us today.
Because one of the factors that we have to consider is there another feasible method to achieve what you're trying to achieve here, and I'm not, you know, it's, they're either covered or they're not covered. And to me, honestly, my initial reaction to this was that you don't want to build covered spots because it's going to cost more money. I, you know, I hear all your arguments about construction and the aesthetics and all that, but I imagine that building 50 covered spots is not cheap. And they got to be maintained, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And if that's the reason, that's the reason. There's, you know, folks are in business in order to make a profit, there's nothing wrong with that. But that's why I asked the question, I'd like to know what kind of a burden compliance would be on you.
Probably a half a million dollars.
Okay.
Current budgetary, you know, the project cost currently for the building size that we're talking, you know, 15, 20 million. And that, you know, that's what we're, we're figuring construction costs are going to be for the current facility, plus the purchase price, plus, plus, plus.
Yeah, yeah. Again, that's, that's why I ask.
Has this been approved? I'm sorry, did I, I'm just, is this...
For, to be apartments?
Yeah.
Apartments in that, in that zoning district, you can jump in, Andy, but they are a permitted use. So it's been approved in the sense that it's a permitted use in the code. My understanding is that the applicant doesn't need any more approvals, you know, this one they're asking for, other than a building permit from the town. No planning board action is necessary on that.
Yeah.
So I, I get it. I, again, I think I understand your reasons for doing it, and I figured that was the case. But I will tell you, my concern about this, and it's nothing personal, I'm glad that somebody's going to reuse that building, but I live nearby, and the traffic on Empire Boulevard is brutal. I don't know how else to put it. And I did see your emails today, somebody forwarded an email from the New York State Department of Transportation saying, "No problem," which, I'm not going to say shocked me, but kind of ticked me off, to be honest with you. As a person that, I travel down that road every day, more than one time a day typically. And I see people fly through the intersection of Plank and Empire, and I know that there's one way in to Hill, I'm going to call it Hillhaven, one way in and one way out, and that's Daytona. The street that used to go all the way down to Creek Street, but doesn't anymore. It's a dead end. So people, apartment residents are going to be coming, you don't have any plan to build another exit or entrance, right?
Unless you take off that retaining line built 20 years ago.
And I know if you do, more curb cuts out to Empire, now the state will have to get involved.
Yeah.
So, so you have Daytona, and I'm, I'm just personally concerned about people flying through the light at Plank even when it's red, and at the same time, somebody's trying to turn left, or, yeah, turn left out of your complex.
Daytona.
There's not a hell of a lot of space to stop in a safe manner. So what, what I'm going to propose tonight, and if you can get us some more details about the cost, I think that would be, that would be helpful. But what I'm going to propose tonight is tabling this, because I want to make sure that I have an understanding of what this board's authority is to review the issue of traffic. When what you're asking for is a variance for covered parking. Are the, you, you two may say, Dan, they don't have, one doesn't have anything to do with the other. And I can appreciate that position. But, and, and folks may tell me, Dan, you know, the fact that you live there and you see it, well, okay, you're being too emotional about it. I don't know about that. But I get it. So, but, but I want to have the time to consult with our council and staff and make sure that at least I, and I generally speak for these folks whether they, they like it or not, but there are, a lot of things happen on an Empire. We have the building of, of living units by K2. Things have changed, even in the two or three years that Hillhaven has closed, they've changed a lot on that road. And unfortunately, we've had some pretty serious accidents even lately. So I'm not prepared to pull the trigger on anything at this point without being satisfied that the steps that should be taken are being taken. Now, New York State may say, you're not an engineer, which I'm not, what do you know about traffic? Okay. I've been doing this for over 20 years, probably closer to 25. So I, I feel a sense of obligation as well to the people in the town, the people that use that road, to, to explore the issue. And it, and again, New York State may say, you're all wet, we're fine even with 100 more units, okay. But I just, I, so my motion is going to be to table it tonight, to ascertain exactly what authority we have, and then if, if we're told, you can look into it, then we can talk about what steps, what further steps we should take to address it. So I, feel free to comment on that, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off at all.
I don't know what the relevancy of the traffic flow is for the covered parking. That's what I struggle with, because that's what we're here for, is the covered parking, which you've already visited on, so I'm going to leave here with scratching my head saying, what was the relevancy of that? You don't, so that's how, you know, for, for my response, that's, I'll just, I'll say that.
Yeah, that, again, fair. I, I get that sort of from a technical legal aspect, but from a more visceral standpoint, you must travel on that road occasionally.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you know, it's 45, 40, people routinely go 65, 70 miles an hour. No? Okay.
I'll go further for you, Tien. We, we have no control over a potential traffic light that I'm sure you're probably potentially looking for, or slash a turning lane left, because that's the biggest challenge coming out of there, right? Left?
I think so.
There's no, there's no middle lane. So to my original responses, because we're not New York State DOT, from a covered parking standpoint, and that's what we're here for, I don't know how that is going to, you know, help this, help us get approved or not approved for that.
So I, I, I hear you. I, I don't know the answer to this question. Another thing I'd like to know is improvements down the road heading toward Arondiquay, which would be east, is that? You know, it's kind of a, a road that goes this way, but toward Arondiquay. Everybody knows what I mean when I say that. There are some improvements going in there, and I thought, I could be wrong, but I thought that the cost of that was shared by a developer at all?
Yes.
Good, okay, so I was correct. So that's something I would throw out there for you to, so if the state were to say, well, we don't think a light at Daytona and Empire is warranted by the numbers or the traffic situation, which they're probably going to say, but, you know, we wouldn't object to it, but, you know, we don't want to pay for the thing, or we don't want to pay for the whole thing. I'd ask you to keep that in, in mind as, as well. So again, those, those are the thoughts that I have.
I was just going to add something to the covered parking part of it. I wasn't, I was hung up a little bit on market rate, so you want to charge market rate housing?
No subsidies.
So, no subsidizing, okay.
Yeah.
And there are those apartment complexes across the street that is very nice, and so from a market rate, I just, isn't covered parking kind of in upstate New York, like a necessity when you're doing some of these buildings? And so I just was really curious and would like to see more information. Just you threw out half a million dollars of the, the cost, I was just, what maybe would that look like? Is it, I wasn't, there's only three of us here, on top of it, this was likely going to be tabled, whether the, 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 the traffic flow is certainly one consideration, but at the root of the, the request, there were some, I, I just would like some more information on cost, and does that change your ability to be market competitive? That was just a question by not having, I know it's a huge investment, if it is $500,000 to put in there, but is there statistics on you'd still be able to charge the same amount as?
Others.
Others. I don't know that, I know nothing about your business, so you probably have more, I was just curious on that.
Probably charge more.
So I didn't know if there was a, something to consider there instead of, but...
I don't have a question for these guys, but I do for Andy, I'll put you on the spot. I don't recall ever granting variances for not having covered parking for any of the other properties around, I mean, anywhere, there's been quite a few apartments built. I don't remember seeing any, and I've, I mean, I've been out here for a while, Dan's 25 years, I don't know if you've seen them, but I, like, I'm trying to think of, are there other examples where we've granted variances for covered parking? I know we've had less parking spaces.
Right.
But not covered parking.
I'm, I'm not aware of any either.
Okay.
I can't think of any.
And again, that just may go to market competitiveness.
Yeah, it would be, it would be good to get that kind of info as well, because honestly, the arguments about the, oh, the aesthetics and, I don't know that they're carrying the day with me. So the, the numbers may be, may be important, and it would be good to get that kind of info. So let me just say, I don't see any call-ins, I don't see any electronic... So let me just say, I don't see any call-ins, I don't see any electronic comments, so I will ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this application. Okay? Why don't you come on up and give us your name and address?
My name is Donna Sketl, and I live at 29 Daytona, and we back up to Hillhaven. I appreciate that the aesthetic of the park-like setting was mentioned, because it does feel like that to us. And I think it would be a shame to add another building to house parking. So, I don't see why they need covered parking. The apartments down the road at the bay, I don't think they have covered parking.
I think they're underneath the building.
Underneath, yeah.
They have it underneath the building? Okay. Well, I appeal to the park-like setting, and it's appreciated that that was given thought, and I would like it to keep that way. And if there has to be a building to cover the parking, maybe we need some trees to put a barrier so we don't have to look at that building.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, well, thank you very much for that comment. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. So, I wanna give you guys one more chance to, before I make a motion to table anything. And of course, you can submit stuff between now and next meeting as well. In addition to the stuff we've talked about.
Yeah, a few points.
Sure.
So one of the important point, what we talked here, basically not altering. Our plan is to, as far as taking the indoor side, not making substantial change to the, that indoor exterior of the, meaning all the site area not touching at all, other than minimum amenities as part of the apartments, you know, whatever we're going to plan in the future, in the design and implement that. That's another thing, is the, how we don't reuse that green space there, you know, so that's would be one of the consideration we're doing there as well. And also, you know, there is another important point we gotta consider here is the, you know, can we replace this covered parking space with something else, right? Any alternative method, right? Basically, whether it's the underground parking or the above-ground parking, those are the only options there at that point. And obviously, you know, as we heard here, pretty much in that indoor neighborhood here, especially houses around there, you know, it's not become a barrier between the building, that aesthetics and things like that apply as well. And also, I think if I understood correctly, this particular location is falls under the Penfield Local Waterfront Rehabilitation Program as well. So that would be one of the beneficial thing, you know, if you can't touch on the, any of the, not disturb the, any site area, that would be beneficial for us all. You know, if you think about a 50 spaces, right, there will be quite a bed footprint you're going to build on in that particular property as well. And saying that, we do have the 232 parking space currently available there. So those are the, some of the points I want to point out.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you for doing that. Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to table for all the reasons discussed, and I'm also gonna include in that motion that we keep the public hearing open. Just in case we decide that we have the jurisdiction to get into the traffic issue, I think these folks need an opportunity to put in whatever evidence they'd like to say that traffic's not an issue, just like we would be entitled to ask questions about traffic, and again, anybody else that wanted to come in. I wanna make sure they have an opportunity to respond to that, if they so choose. So my motion is to table for the reasons stated and to leave the hearing open pending next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Anything, do we need to add anything to that? All right, so we have a motion to table and leave the public hearing open. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, too.
James Brasley, 10 Cambridge Court, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Peter and Donna Saleem, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is permitted under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code that is also larger than the principal structure as required by Section 250-2.2 of the code, and taller than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1216 Harris Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Peter and Donna Saleem and is Zoned RA-2, SBL number 095.02-3.6, application number 24Z-0028.
Okay, if we may have your names and addresses for the record, and I think Andres is gonna walk you through this.
Good evening, I'm James Brasley, architect. My office is at 10 Cambridge Court in Fairport.
Pete Salem, homeowner at 1216 Harris Road.
Okay.
Mrs. Salem, Donna Salem is also here tonight. She didn't come forward, so both Salem's are here.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
You don't wanna get on TV? Okay.
All right, so you guys are here looking for some variances because you wanna build a accessory structure in the back. I think it was 45 by 70?
It's 70 by 46 feet, or 3,220 square feet.
Okay. And for that, what we need, there's a few variances that you're looking for. One is from, that's the north property line, I guess, right? Yeah, so that's the north property line. You're looking to be 35 feet from the side as opposed to the 50 required by code. Some of that revolves around access. There's currently a driveway going into the property that's on that property line side, and in terms of connecting, that's the shortest route, I guess, in a sense, to help reduce costs of, you know, getting a driveway back there. And also for disturbance of soil, fill, fill and, you know, grading and things like that, that was the best site in terms of the area versus being in the center of the property that wouldn't require, or, you know, 50 feet for that space. And then, you also have a smaller shed on site that you wanna continue to utilize, and so that requires a variance, because now we have two accessory structures. And then, the building height, you wanna be 27 feet, where code allows 20 foot for an accessory structure, and that's primarily because of the, I'll say the steeper pitch of the roof that you currently have at your home, and you want those to match, or be, you know, as close as possible to what you can have there at your home, so it looks a little more in character with your home. And then, the building footprint. And so that is, you're allowed by code to be no bigger than your primary dwelling. So meaning if your home, I think it was 28,700, or, yeah, 20, or 2,878 square feet. 2,800. Yep, for your home, and this building is proposed to be 3,220. Correct. And so you need a variance for that aspect. So I guess, initially, how come it has to be that size? And, you know, as a zoning board, we was like, okay, they're looking for four variances here, has plenty of space to fit on the property, those aren't the issue. How come we're looking at that size and it couldn't be, you know, two feet shorter on one side, four foot shorter on the other, and all of a sudden now we're within code for one of the variances that we don't need to have? I guess in a sense, what dictates that specific size and not a little bit smaller?
Mr. Salem has a lot of things he would like to store in this building. He's using his existing smaller second, accessory building for lawn and garden care, things with flammable materials, gasoline and such, so he wants to keep that separate. He wants to be able to put an RV in there, he might put it in a car lift, there has to be room all the way around so that you can work on it. When we originally started talking six months ago, we were considering a 4,000 square foot building. So actually, he's gone down to 3,220. And also, in the neighborhood, both on Harris Road and around the corner on Marcher Road, there's several other accessory buildings that are also as large as the existing house on the property or bigger. So in our mind, it kind of fit into the character of the neighborhood.
Yep, and I was actually, Andy, if you wanna pull that up so everyone else can see that, that's in the letter of intent, the last page on that. That was actually really useful, to have those pinpointed out where you showed, you look all around the neighborhood, and it's not even like a big area, it's just that area of town right there. You pinpointed quite a few already, yep, right there.
I'd like to take credit for that, but Pete Salem made this whole drawing. He's a retired engineer. Retired engineers are my favorite clients, because they always do most of the work for me.
Yep, yep, so that was very, you know, in a sense, for, you know, because we always say, okay, is it in character? What else is around the area? Will it stick out because it's the only one? And you've basically covered those aspects that, in that area of just, you know, I wanna say there's probably 10 parcels on that map, or maybe a few more. Almost every single one has some aspect of what we're looking for in this variance.
All these houses are within 1,000 feet of 1216 Harris Road.
Okay.
Both the ones on Harris and the ones on Marcher.
So, since you made a strong case for, yes, it's not gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood, it's gonna be in character for those aspects.
What's the acreage?
He has almost 10 acres, 9.67 acres. He also owns the parcel immediately to the south, which is a separate parcel, and that's also nine-point-high-something acres.
Isn't it like, once, I could be totally making this up, isn't it, if it's over 10 acres, it also, the size of the accessory building can be bigger than?
So, the size?
Or just, that wouldn't matter, because we're just under 10 acres.
I know, but we're so close.
It's 1% of the square footage of the parcel.
I knew that there was something.
Yep.
All right, I wasn't totally.
No, no, you got it. So for those aspects, let's see.
When you make stuff up, you have to sound confident.
No, I'm not at all.
You gotta just go with it. For those, so I do thank you for that whole, I mean, I think that was probably one of the more useful things, because you drive around, you can't always get the same feel when you see those things, you know, you see them, but you don't really have it pinpointed like that, so that worked out quite well. Thank you.
Especially in a neighborhood where all the lots are so large and all about 10 acres. It's very rural, almost agricultural.
Yes, yes. I don't think I have any other questions for the applicant.
I'm good.
All right.
Oh, actually, I do have one more thing I gotta say. The neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Burke, did write a letter of support, and I believe they are just north of your property. And from what I understand, also the neighbor to the south, directly to the south, that owns that parcel is probably in favor of this as well.
Because that's you.
Because that's you.
Yes. Okay.
Yes, and the Burks to the north at 1212 Harris Road have a comparable size. Theirs is 3,150 square feet, I believe, and we're asking for 3,220.
Yeah, so it'd be negligible to see the difference, and they line up, in a sense, they're in the back far enough where I think they're, you know.
400-plus feet off the road.
Yep, yep. That's all I've got for questions right now, unless somebody in the audience.
No, I don't see any call-in, I don't see any electronics. So anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's move to the consideration.
Okay. This is a, I'm gonna move this to type 2 pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the merits?
And the merits. I am going to move to approve this, or these variances. In terms of undesirable change, nothing was identified here as illustrated by the information that was submitted all over the area. You know, within 1,000 feet, there's many, many, many examples of all of these variances that are being requested all over. So it is in character with the neighborhood. It's not like it's a one-acre or two-acre parcel that we're trying to squeeze a lot onto. There's adequate space around here. Could the benefit have been found some other way, possibly? Yes, but I think there's a detriment to other things. You know, if you move it more to the center, then you have to have more fill brought in, deals with drainage and grading and things like that, which can have an offset impact to other property owners once you start changing grades. Is it substantial? I'll say none of these by themselves are substantial, but I think we have similar applications tonight. When you start combining these, you start going, okay, is it substantial? Maybe as all four together, yes, but by themselves, I would say no. I didn't see it that way. No adverse impacts to the physical environments. I think more so if they, if they had to bring in fill and change the grade, I think then we'd see more impacts to an environmental issue. Is it self-created? Yes, they all are, for the most part. It's difficult to not have an application that comes in for something new that's not self-created for this aspect.
All right, I will second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well done. All right, so we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck.
Very good, thanks.
Good job, yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And I'm thinking, last but not least, right?
Yes, sir.
Brandon Emerson, 27 Woodrose Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of David and Wanda Williams, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1820 Plank Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by David and Wanda Williams and is Zoned RA-2, SBL number 096.03-1-25. This is application number 24Z-0029.
All right, we can have your names and addresses.
Brandon Emerson, I'm at 27 Woodrose Drive, that's in Webster, technically the town of Penfield.
My name's Brian White from McManleeru Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York.
Okay, thanks. So, just to kind of quickly go through this, once again, a thorough application. You have what's depicted there on the TV now, a big lot that you wanna subdivide into two lots. There is, this structure currently exists, and when you subdivide, it's gonna be closer to the new property line than the code allows. So you're asking for a variance, a setback variance for the building. Nothing is going to change except the property lines. I don't know how long it's been there, over 20 years, 30 years, something along those lines, or more?
I believe so, yes.
Right.
The road has been there since the early 1900s.
Yeah.
It's been a long time for all of us.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that. Is there any way we can turn that map around today? Make, so you got Plank Road, I'd like Plank Road on the bottom of what you're depicting, because it was, if you can't do it, you can't do it.
Just turn your head.
Yeah, I tried that today, I got a neckache.
How's that?
The rotate feature, Dan, was a little technical for you. Sorry.
Yeah, wow. I tried to find that. I know with the rotation.
And there are.
You gotta click on view, and then you click on rotate.
And there was the one thing that I, I guess, there's no other configuration for these lots that would allow us, you know, to be able to go onto Plank Road without having a flag that basically points down, because the other side has, I think, that driveway, you know, shape in the front that prohibits really a driveway to come down without interfering with an existing driveway. So there's really no, this is the, really the best spot to come through with that.
It's the practical location, the house on the easterly side, I think is within 20 feet, plus or minus. If you were to put a new driveway through, there'd be right next to that existing home. We did submit earlier today a support letter from the neighbor, immediately adjoining this property line, it would be, could you pull that up?
1808.
Yep. Neighbor's to the west.
Patricia Phillips, is owner of property at Tex Prussel 24, which joins this proposed flag portion of the property.
The, you have in your letter here in paragraph two that, in order, you know, a possible alternative, you list there, but then you say why it's not feasible. If you could just kind of go over that, I'd appreciate that, and that's really my only other comment.
Certainly. So the alternative to this proposed configuration would be bringing the driveway along the easterly side of the parcel, yep, right where your pointer is there. There is an existing U-shaped driveway on the property, you know, so to put a new driveway through there, you'd eliminate that access on the current dwelling, and it would include the removal of several, you know, numerous mature trees through there, as well as, you know, there's an overhead power line running down the neighbor's property along the property line there. And again, the neighbor's house is approximately 20 feet from that property line.
Right. Yeah, those are the things that I think make that alternative not feasible in the sense that we have to consider it.
And it doesn't, I mean, the building's already, because there's already a building that's. that's going to be out of compliance right there as well.
I think that's out of compliance right now.
Right.
In general, because that's 35 feet. It would have to be 50, I think, on this parcel anyways, so it's, if it was built, it would need a variance no matter what.
Right.
So we're hoping to utilize the existing gravel driveway, so essentially everything stays the same, but the new subdivision line running through there.
Okay. I don't see any call-ins. I don't see any electronic comments. There's nobody left in the audience, but I'll ask anyone who want to speak about this? No? Okay, let's move to the seeker. I'll make a motion to declare the type 2 action.
Second.
All right. So we have a seeker motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. And on the merits, I'll make a motion to approve. I think we covered all the important grounds here. The shed's not new. There have been no issues or concerns that we've heard about. It will not create, therefore, an undesirable change to the neighborhood, because nothing's changing. This is a substantial variance, yes, in this, on paper with the numbers, but again, we have a building that's been there. No one's going to notice any difference here. No proof whatsoever that this variance is going to lead to any environmental issues or adverse impacts on the physical conditions. Is it self-created? Yes, but as Andres has already pointed out, almost all of these things, from our standpoint, are, but overall balancing, I think, weighs in favor of granting this, so my motion is to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
And I think that was the last one.
Yep.
For tonight, so good job, everybody. We will stand in recess until the next hearing. Thank you.